This meeting, the Board of Selectmen to order, if I could, could I have an acceptance of the agenda?
So moved.
I have a second.
Motion, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Watkins? If you could come up. Most of us know who you are, but if you don't mind just giving us your name and address, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you.
Doris Crery, 8 Oceanside Drive, Situate. And with me is Joe Rossi from Marshfield. And we're here to talk about the Bigger Waters Act of 2012. And the good news, it's about an amendment that's in Washington. And it is pending with discussion down there, starting on the ninth. So I'm going to turn it over to Joe and let him bring you up to date on all of this.
Thank you. You have the letter in front of you right now. My name's Joe Rossi. I'm the Chair of the Marshfield Citizens Coastal Coalition and Acting Chair of the Massachusetts Coastal Coalition. Real quickly, the Massachusetts Coastal Coalition was founded about a year and a half ago, but recently became active again within the last two months. This Massachusetts Coastal Coalition is a regional coalition of communities all up and down, right now southeastern Mass, including the Cape, coming together to support legislation to postpone changes to bigger waters, but still in favor of reforming the flood insurance program. In front of you is a letter that the Coalition has drafted that we hope to send to Congress before they discuss their legislation next week. It's really, what it's doing is outlining the challenges that we face here in Plymouth County specifically, but really all of New England. And what we're asking for the selectmen here in Situate to do is to sign the letter as selectmen of Situate and return it to the Massachusetts Coastal Coalition as we gather signatures, much like yours, all over Massachusetts, to then send the letter to Congress. This is happening, we have currently about eighteen member communities of the Massachusetts Coastal Coalition and many other organizations that are not representing the governments of those communities. So that's a little bit of an overview of the letter and who we are at the Coalition. And Doris, I don't know if you had anything you wanted to add?
No, I think just that time is of the urgency. What this amendment will do is it will reinstate grandfathering for primary residents. It does not help those people who are in pre-firm structures. We would like to have had the legislation be something different, but there is no way if we want to get anything passed and implemented to start making changes in this. This legislation are two bills that are identical, one in the House and one in the Senate. When they each get voted on, they don't go to conference, they don't go to committee, none of that. They would just move on then to the President to sign. And Greater New Orleans, they issued a letter similar to this. And because of the number of signatures on it and the breadth of the signatures in the sense of, we were on that one as well, as well as Situate. And that went to the President himself, you know, in hopes of, so that, I feel, kind of initiated what we have as legislation down there. This in no way is going to stop making further moves on legislation, but this would repeal the grandfathering and bring it back to what people had prior to changing on their properties in 2012 and July sixth.
And you need this signed, returned by the ninth?
Well, that's what we're hoping. We're actually going to take the signatures and send them digitally along with all the other ones we're gathering in one letter to all of the members of Congress and the Senate. So ideally, we'd like to have them back at the beginning of next week if possible. The discussion will begin on the ninth, but we don't feel that the vote will happen until the end of next week if they do take up a vote. There's a very good possibility that this could carry into the beginning of next year, but we don't want to take the chance of missing out on the opportunity of getting to them before that happens.
All right. I just don't know. I suppose we could, you know, leave this across the hall, we could individually sign it, if that's something we can do.
I think you should take it under advisement.
Yeah, we got to read it first.
That's right, no, I haven't even, that's what I said, I haven't even looked at it. Yeah, no, we can't do anything tonight, obviously.
Also, just so you know, at the top, there is our website. The letter is at our website for your convenience as well. And there's also a little form you can fill out to sign it digitally right on the website as well, so you can spread the word and also for your own convenience, sign it that way as well.
Okay. Comments, questions?
Just a quick comment, Joe. I want to thank you for spearheading this. I've heard you on the radio, you were at the rally, and you know, you're really, one of the real reasons this is getting pushed as fast as it is. So you're doing a great job, you and all the people involved, especially Dave Wall and the people from Situate as well. But, you know, thank you for taking the lead on it.
Small stars.
Doris, right?
Doris, you're a future class.
I was going to say, David's had another meeting tonight, or he would be here with us, so we have a few of the Situate Coastal Coalition here with us.
Right, right, right. Well, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Any other Watkins? No? Agenda item number three is a discussion vote and award of contact for the schematic design of the public safety complex. Tricia, you're in the name of the company, Doran Whittier of Newburyport. I didn't see any backup. My only question was where the others might have come in at, if this is sixty thousand. Do you happen to know, I mean, was it close? Were there two bidders? Were there ten?
Two things. One is, you don't have the contract, because I do not have the contract, so I probably ask that this be tabled to the seventeenth, unless you're comfortable doing a contingent on the changes Jim Toomey has recommended, which are minor, he said by email today. That is why you don't have any backup, because I didn't get the contract from him, although he did say it's minor stuff. To answer your question, is when we engage a contractor for schematic design, it is not a bid process. We actually establish the price in the request for proposals, and then we just select an architect that we feel best meets the responsiveness and the criteria we're looking for. And as you know, the Public Building Commission does that. And they recommend to me their top two or three, and then I negotiate with the selected person. But it's a fixed fee, short, plus or minus some things, and it's for sixty thousand dollars.
Do you need it before the next meeting, or can we?
I think if you're comfortable not having paper in front of you, which you know I like to have and you like to have, I think I'm comfortable since it is a fixed fee and we can get Doran Whittier working right away, based on what Jim told me today. If I hadn't gotten that email from him, I would say no. But since it's over fifty thousand, it is a board vote, otherwise it's another agenda item for you on the seventeenth. So the motion would be amended contingent on Town Council's assent. It's a standard form AIA contract, so, which I'm sure John knows, so it's nothing unique in that lines. And it holds them responsible to the RFP we issued and their response to the RFP.
And Doran Whittier was on the, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Rick.
And Doran Whittier was on the list from the Public Building Commission?
Doran Whittier was one of the, we received nine proposals, they introduced five. Doran Whittier was recommended. And again, as with the OPM, is the recommended architect for the Gates feasibility study. So there's synergy there by having the same OPM and the same architect, although we both did extremely separate processes and ended up in the same place, so.
So I would say, let's wait unless you tell me you need it before two weeks.
I don't think it's going to be fatal.
I would say we wait, so we, and I'd like to look at the RFP, do I, I don't remember that.
Sure.
All right. Number seventeen?
And will you make a note to make sure I include the RFP in the contract, please?
Yeah.
All right. Number four, discussion vote, donation of land policy. I think we had agenda item that's coming up after this had come up maybe last month. Tricia had wanted to have something in place.
We got that already, it's in here.
So, we got a version of that. I read it over. To me, I don't know, unless I'm missing something. Doesn't seem like a lot of properties coming off our tax rolls that, you know, I don't know. I personally don't think it's a bad thing to accept land if people want to donate. But that's just my own, that I could be all alone. You know, it could be unbuildable, it could be wet, and it would never have anything built there in, you know, many, many years. You know, the amount of money here coming off the taxes is not a lot of money. But that's just my own thought. I throw that out there and whoever else might have an opinion, you know.
Well, I think this-
If you look at that in a vacuum, that's true. But if you look at the CPC acquisitions that's also come out of the tax roll, it's sort of cumulative over the term, too. It's another way to look at it.
But that's a different subject.
Where, you know, yeah, I agree with Rick. I mean, this is, this is for free, CPC, we're paying for this, you know, and, in some cases, a lot of money.
I think one of the things you have to look at is when somebody has property, they're paying taxes on it, in all probability, that property is not going to yield the highest use, which is development residential. So they have it. And the next question that we have is, this is a policy for the town to decide whether or not they want to take it back, to maybe augment certain areas that they're trying to preserve. If it's water areas, we might be able to say, yes, we'd like to do that because it's going to further protect it. If there are areas that maybe we could maybe use for connection, for linkage for various neighborhoods, again, this isn't like taking buildable lots in all probability, although I think the next subject is a possibility. So I think it's a policy that the Board should be able to take a look at. It's not a mandatory item, it's pretty deferential or discretionary if the Board wants to do so. And the policy's in place for us to take a look at it. If we decide not to, we don't have to take it. And I think that's the only thing. I think the one thing that I've always said is that, instead of having people immediately saying, we're going to give it to conservation, being on the Board of Selectmen, I'd rather see it given back to the town, that's the Board of Selectmen to decide the use of it. And if the Board delects to put it into conservation, we'll put it into conservation. The reason why I've always said that the Board should have the option is because some of these pieces or parcels could be used for recreation. Once it goes into conservation, the only way you're going to be able to, shall we say, peel back that restriction is you have to go to Beacon Hill Legislature to be able to do so. And I'd rather have the Board have that option because we could have some grand plan through our building department, or rather, our planning department, to kind of string these things together as we go forward, whether gaining access to beaches, whether it's putting a trail, walking trail, so that people can get into these areas. That's the only reason why I've always advocated giving the option to the Board of Selectmen to decide. And I know about two or three years ago, we had a lot up off of Hathley that we're talking about maybe bringing back to sell, because it is a buildable lot. So I think, you know, there's some options here in the future, you could take some parcels of land that in the past have been nominal or for tax purposes, and maybe due to sewer or some other type of changes in the subsurface and the, you know, for being able to perk it, may become buildable, then the town can maybe take it, give it to Habitat for Humanity, Affordable Housing Trust, or maybe even sell it to try to generate more income for the general fund when we have all these other things, all these other problems or deficits, so.
Another reason why you'd like-
Absolutely. There's a range of possibilities that could benefit the town. And that's why I think a policy's not, it's a policy, it's not a, as all our other policies, it's for the Board to be guided by to take a look at, but it's not mandatory. And again, if somebody, the Board says, whether it's this Board or a future Board says, we don't want it, we don't want to adhere to it, that's the Board's discretion, it's their prerogative.
Tony?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, my question was, is this memorandum, this isn't the actual policy, though, this is just the points.
No, I don't know, well, that was re-included. The memo that I sent to the-
To conservation.
Conservation, after the Board's meeting dated November twenty-fifth outlines the things we wanted them to consider.
Yeah, I think, I think your memorandum is great, and I think it brings up many points that I didn't think of, that we should take into consideration when looking at a piece of property. And similar to other things that we have, that it's a guideline for us to use-
Exactly.
-when we decide. But you have to have it written down, I think, is what Tricia's point is, because we may not think of these ten points when we look at every piece of property. And, you know, I don't think we always want to take a piece of land just because someone wants to get rid of it.
Correct.
You know, because they don't want to maintain it, or they don't want to pay the taxes, no matter how nominal they are on it. So I would vote yes to get some sort of guideline, you know, take these points in this memorandum and put them in a guideline form, so we can just have it every time we get a piece of property, we say, does it abut something we want? You know, does it meet any of these criteria?
And it's a growing, in the future, you may come up with a new criteria that becomes relevant for that future Board, for whatever changes, you know, that may take place in that location.
But if you run against a piece of property that doesn't hit any of them, then it's a-
It's an easy decision, I agree, yeah.
That's what I thought.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I support having these guidelines written down. There's no policy here to review or vote on or anything, but I guess I'd just say, sense of the Board is, put together one side of a piece of paper as guidelines of, these are the things that need to be considered. I would not support a policy that says, we will accept land under the following conditions, or we won't accept land under the other following conditions. We really don't have piles and piles of these cases that come before us. We have two, three a year. Trish has done a good job articulating on that in the last five or six years. Shaun, as you pointed out, it's not a heck of a lot of tax money, but we just have, these are the things that the various Boards, as well as ourselves, to Mr. Danahue's point, should consider. It's a good reminder, and it would bring some consistency to the process. So I would support that.
Okay, great.
So, I'm confused, because that's the discussion we had in your November meeting, and you asked, you didn't want a policy, you wanted guidelines.
Right, that's fine.
So, and then those guidelines went to the Conservation Commission for their feedback. But if I hear you right, Rick, you want those same guidelines for the Board to have before them when we get land requests in the future. Like you said, put them on a piece of paper.
Sure.
And I would also add, what John just mentioned, is there a potential, is it a develop a lot, is there a potential-
That's one of the bullet points, should be.
For, you know, that adds to the ten that are here right now. And I can revise that and just put it as a document that you can have.
Yeah, just as, you know, points to consider, or guidelines for consideration of potentially donated land.
And if, from here and everyone so far, if it, it doesn't have to pass the majority or anything like that, it's up for whoever's sitting here at that time to say yes, just a guideline.
We had one, I think it was last year, we were talking about it up on Hathley near the Squash Creek Pond. And the issue was, or what I raised was, you know, it was going to conservation around the pond, but I said, is that a parcel, because it was right on the roadway for people in the audience who don't understand, is this part of the road that in the future, if there's ever going to be a bike path, that we'd want to have without that restriction?
I remember that.
So you have that ability to use that portion of land. And that's the other thing that I'm saying, you don't know what's going to come up in the future, because all of a sudden, ten years ago, we never talked about bike paths, and then boom, the past ten years, we have bike paths. So you might find land that we end up acquiring for the purposes to further augment that use, for recreational purposes. That's, that's the reason why I say it's kind of like a constant-changing, evolving, if you will, policy, or to take a look at these guidelines, it's guidance, as you say, but ultimately, it's not static, it's evolving.
One of the things also I have on there is, sometimes the donors would be interested in donating it only for conservation. Other times, they'll say, let's donate to the town for conservation, and when you ask them, they're saying, they'll say, actually, I don't really care if it's conservation, not now that you think about it. So we should make sure we have that dialogue with the potential donor, so that, I would suggest, would be part of the bullet points, is the intent or the requirements of the donor, just to make sure that that's explicitly addressed.
Okay, good point.
So I think it's just, carry on. I don't think we need a motion, just-
Well, I don't know, I think we do. I think that's what Tricia's asking for, in the last month.
Well, I'm not going to be able, I can't move to vote a document I haven't seen yet.
No, no, I can, I can add the things that we just did, if you want, and, yeah.
Just put it as a separate one piece.
And it'll just, it'll do exactly as you say. Now, you know, we gave this to conservation, you want your own, I'll add the talk points that aren't here, and then we'll just have guidelines.
Yeah, yeah, that's great.
And you can vote to adopt them.
And they go to all the Boards?
There'll just be guidelines, not a policy.
Yeah, and then go to all the Boards, this is what we're thinking of.
And can, we can do that for the seventeenth.
And this one already went to CONCOM. Yeah.
The next, the next agenda item?
It's easy enough to do.
Yes, right, because, yeah, we have Pat's response.
Basically, from policy to guidelines as well.
Well, and change it from a memo to a separate doc.
Yeah, I think the memo, yeah, it's going to look a lot-
Right, but I mean, as far as on the motion, you know, we, it isn't really a policy, it's just guidelines, every situation.
No, it's not, that's what you decided in the November meeting, you don't want a policy. Because a policy, you have to follow, guidelines just to-
Gives us some flexibility.
Yeah, but on the motion itself, it was saying policy, that's right.
No, but it's no, no problem to have that for-
It's good to get this down, written down. That's the key thing.
And this, by doing this, will have no effect on the next one, where we're going to discuss a donation.
Let's talk about it.
All right, so we'll move on to the next one. It's, in fact, a, the reason we had this discussion, I think, a couple of months ago, was for this next agenda item. It's a donation of apostle of land on Shadwell Road.
I'll take the lead, Mr. Chair, if you want me to, because I've talked to Mr. Larson.
Can someone just tell me where it is?
I was just going to start with that. If you go down Tilden and Turner, there's a, at the juncture there, if you go back either street, one block, it's a, it's a street that cuts right around to create a square or rectangle.
So that's this, okay.
Just that apostle right there.
That's Tilden. Tilden, you see the E.N. of Tilden there? And then Turner's off the map, over to the top.
There you go. So anyway, Mr. Larson has sent this to the town, he actually contacted me, requesting whether or not the town would be interested in taking back land that he owns. He's identified it by its parcel number thirty-nine dash twenty-six dash two fifty. Previously, he's donated two parcels, abutting both of them on Shadwell Road, to the conservation. We've accepted them in the past. He submitted this back in August, and the reason was because it's been delayed is due to the fact that we've been kind of dealing with this policy issue, what we're going to be doing with it. Needless to say, he's looking to do it before the end of the year, and the reason is because he's going to get a tax benefit by it. Now, I said to him I'd approach the Board, talk to the Board. Again, I also mentioned that the reason why I was trying to avoid any type of conservation restriction is that we could take a look at these parcels and determine whether or not maybe the town can use it for its own reasons. The three reasons that came to my mind were first, and not necessarily in this order, but it could go to Habitat for Humanity in the event that there was any sewage that's going to go down Shadwell Road, it could go to the Situate Affordable Housing Trust to be able to build on it, or if the town decided, as its own decision, to keep it and in the future sell it, in the event that we needed to generate money for some downside or for the general fund. So, in any event, Shadwell Road is not sewed. All these parcels and these properties have to have Title V, septic system. It's my understanding that it may be on the next priority for seuing if it gets there. So I did explain that to Mr. Larson, and he said he didn't really care, he's trying to get this done before the end of the year to get his tax benefit, whatever that may be. It's my understanding, I think it's a part of his submission, that he submitted what the assessor's office assesses it for, for tax purposes, I believe, annually, I think he's paying taxes, hundred and seventy-six dollars. I was going to say, like, is it hundred and seventy, four hundred or something?
The value's thirteen-nine, is that what it is?
So, it's not like he's paying a lot in taxes to the town. So the question to the Board is, does the Board just want to be able to accept it back? If so, great, if the Board decides not to, that's fine, too. But my only push on this would be, if there is going to be sewer in the future on this road, the Board of Selectmen will have the option to decide to do what it wants to do and make this a buildable lot, because that could become a buildable lot, if it's sewed. And that gives us the option to decide what we want to do. And if we don't, then I'll inform Mr. Larson that the town is not interested.
If you had that conversation with him, if Title V regulations change and all of a sudden, yes, sewer might not go down there, but all of a sudden, it could be, something could be built here. As long as you've had that discussion with him.
I've had that specific discussion with him, I told him that.
He could be sitting, you know, ten years down the road.
Because I didn't want him to think that by taking it back, that he'd be foregoing potentially a hundred or a hundred and fifty, or whatever the price may be. He's well aware of it, so.
Anyone else have any thoughts or comments based on that?
I do.
Rick?
Yeah, I'm in favor of accepting this land for us, but I would want it to be contingent upon, and I say this just to cover ourselves, a brief letter from him, from the donor, that it's fine with him that it not go into conservation.
All right, okay.
Just, just so it's really clear.
All right, you know what, that's, that's fair. I can tell you, he said he doesn't care whether it goes to conservation.
No, absolutely, I'm not questioning that at all, just to have it, just so that's written down to cover ourselves.
Sure.
So, I'm fine, I don't want to, like, table this until then, I just, let's make a contingent upon us getting a letter from him saying he is fine with it being donated to the town, not necessarily the commission itself.
All right, okay. Anyone else all right with that? All right. Accept the motion, if someone else-
I'll move the Board of Selectmen vote to accept parcel ID three-nine dash two-six dash two-five dash O dash R, twenty-six, Shadwell Road, to be placed in the care and custody of the Town of Situate, comma, pending receipt of a letter from Mr. Henry Larson Jr. confirming that he is not specifically donating it for conservation.
Before I ask for a second, Shaun, what's your, I thought we got a letter from him. Would that, Rick, would that satisfy your-
Didn't, well, the reason is, is because the way the motion said conservation, I just wanted to make sure that we're covered.
All right, okay. All right, I have a motion, and do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and opposed? Unanimous? The Sexes Discussion and a Vote Request the Department of Revenue for Limited Scope Management Review. Town, I think we spoke about this a couple of meetings, a year or so ago. Tricia, I had asked you earlier about downsides to this. You really said there wasn't any, it was not a cost to the town to do this review.
And did I read somewhere that Marshfield has just done this?
All right.
Anything else you'd like to add?
No, I, I think I outlined it in the Board, that DOR has a very respected division, the Technical Assistance Division, that comes in free of charge to look at governance issues in communities, and can provide a lot of best practice information, and has a lot of experience at other communities. I used it in past communities, and, not recently, but I understand their expertise and knowledge has really expanded, and that's why there's sometimes a six-month wait time for them to come in. But I think, from looking back on the last year, I think it's something that I would certainly welcome in trying to see how we can be more effective and better manageable, because it's really getting to be quite a chore. And so this is a way to look at that and see what might make sense. And I, you know, I don't know, and maybe you don't know, but maybe they have some ideas.
And if, this might be a stupid question, but if they had some changes, would it have to go to town meeting to get approval?
Well, charter changes have to go to town meeting to petition the Legislature to do that, or you can have a full-blown charter commission, or you can have that Government Study Committee that we talked about earlier, well, last year, I think, no, earlier this year. So I think this at least helps them, you know, if they can have a report and respond to, that, that saves a lot of time, because it provides a lot of data, a lot of information.
The only thing I'd add is that they're not coming in and looking at the way the town runs in totality. We're asking them to do two specific tasks, you know, look at the timetables that we have to deal with in terms of our budget season, and look at our organizational structure in terms of responsibilities. So, you know, they're coming in with a real specific task, and they're going to dive into it and give us feedback, and then if we like it, we can implement it, if we don't like it, we can move on.
That's why it's called a limited scope one. They do do big, huge things that result in, but this is just a limit to your, just the two specific areas.
I think it's great.
Marsh, when Marshfield's was done, we have access to that as well, Tricia?
Yep, we do, I can give it to you. Rocco emailed it to me, actually, their study recommended that they create the position of Finance Director, so, slash Treasure Collector. So when Nancy came over here, they are now advertising for that position, and it's based on the DOR study.
Is there, is there a cost to it?
Nope.
Great.
All right.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve and endorse the request to the Department Department of Revenue Technical Assistance Section to perform a management review for Town of Situate.
Motion, and I have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and opposed? Unanimous, great. Agenda item number seven, our list of annual license renewals, if someone wants to-
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following liquor licenses for 2014. Barker Tavern, Reva Restaurant, Situate Tavern, Cosmos Cafe, Gannett Grill, The River Club, Hathley Golf Club, Oral Restaurant, The Inn at Situate Harbor, PJ's Country House, Situate Country Club, Situate Harbor Yacht Club, Galley, Mulaney's Harborside, Stillwater Wine and Gourmet, JW's Burger Bar, Widow's Walk Golf Course, Tedeschi's Food Shop, TK O'Malley's Sports Cafe, Situate Package Store, San Zen Cafe, San Zen Retail Wine and Beer, Situate Racket and Fitness, Situate Post 3169, Reynolds Package Store, The Village Market, Harborside Wine and Spirits, Millworf Restaurant, and Front Street Gourmet Wine and Spirits.
Thank you, Rick, I have a motion and a second.
Discussion?
Yes.
I have a question, why Situate Harbor Yacht Club got a liquor license? Don't they have their own, like, BYOB or something?
It's like any other club, isn't it?
They, I'm just curious, they don't, they don't sell liquor?
They're tickets a stone, don't they, isn't it?
No, you bring your own, I think. I'm a member.
You still need one to bring in. Yeah, I'm a member there, it is BYOB, so.
Wow, can't believe they allow both.
Huh, all right. Anyway, just curious. All right.
I know certainly the Inn at Situate Harbor doesn't. Can't bring any alcohol into your rooms, because they have a lot of influences.
Yeah, that's a different scenario, though.
Well, but it's a similar situation, you've been bringing in alcohol where you have a liquor license, that seems strange.
I remember in years past, when a place did not have a liquor license, like years ago, the Flounder and Restaurant to Chinese food, you could bring beer and wine and stuff. Yeah, BYOB. Then, when they got the license, I think they surrendered that, correct?
Yeah, you, yeah, you can't have those.
It must be like a corking fee or a corking license to do it, or something?
Huh.
I don't know, just kind of curious.
Oh.
All right.
The no-name restaurant in Boston, years ago.
All right, I have a motion and a second.
Oh, I could tell you some stories.
Did we ask for a vote? If we didn't, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, someone want to move on to the next one?
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following common viculars licenses for 2014. Barker Tavern, Reva Restaurant, Situate Tavern, Cosmos Cafe, Gannett Grill, The River Club, Hathley Golf Club, Oral Restaurant, Inn at Situate Harbor, PJ's Country House, Situate Country Club, Situate Harbor Yacht Club, Galley, JW's Burger Bar, Window, Widow's Walk Golf Course, Tedeschi's Food Shop, TK O'Malley's Sports Cafe, San Zen Cafe, Situate Racket and Fitness, Post, Situate Post number thirty-one sixty-nine, The Village Market, The Millworf Restaurant, Front Street Gourmet, Wine and Spirits, Driftway Donuts, and Harbor Donuts, and Harbor Donuts, there you go.
Motion in a second.
Second.
All right, motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
So I got a question on this, is Duncan Donuts, how come Duncan Donuts isn't on here?
I hear it's Driftway Donuts.
Is that Driftway Donuts?
Their technical name is-
Technical name is the others, Driftway Donuts and Harbor Donuts? Yeah, okay, just wondering.
One sec, Marty has a good question, why don't you ask him?
Well, just, just going back, it just, just occurred to me, but we've, we've renewed a liquor license to the Inn at Situate Harbor, which is in the middle of a transfer, so how does that work?
If you do not renew it-
They can't transfer it?
Right.
Okay.
So we're renewing it to the old people, and they're going to-
They're going to transfer, okay, all right, thank you.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following entertainment licenses for 2014. Barker Tavern, Reva Restaurant, Gannett Grill, The River Club, Hathley Golf Club, Inn at Situate Harbor, PJ's Country House, Situate Country Club, Situate Harbor Yacht Club, The Galley, JW's Burger Bar, TK O'Malley's Sports Cafe, San Zen Cafe, Situate Post three-one-six-nine, and The Millworf Restaurant.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the innkeeper's license for the Inn at Situate Harbor for 2014.
Motion in a second. I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? I think that does it, if I didn't, if I didn't miss anything. License renewals for tonight, and there were asked some from, I think, our last meeting, if we could sign later on, save you, taken a couple hours to sign a whole pile of them. Agenda item number eight is to open the annual town meeting warrant, which the ATM will be April fourteenth, 2014.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to open the April fourteenth, 2014 annual town meeting warrant at seven forty-two P.M.
Motion in a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Just was going to mention, the articles need to be submitted in the Selectmen's office in the next two weeks.
Seven thirty-eight?
Didn't I say seven thirty-eight? What did I say?
Said seven forty-two.
Oh, seven thirty-eight.
It's actually seven thirty-six.
Seven thirty-seven.
By the time this gets broadcasted, it'll probably be delayed.
There we are. Ken, pick a time.
Next agenda item. Number nine is to, on the Bay to Water and Sewer Bill.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to postpone Agenda Item number nine.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right.
Opposed? None? Agenda item number ten is the week, uh, the annual report, the annual, the weekly report.
The annual, that works for me.
Weekly annual report, by the-
It's going to be annual, just a second. Annual town meeting. A few more weeks. And the week ahead, from Tricia.
I thought I had a ton of stuff, but it's all gone out of my head. Two things, been working on the capital plan, because that needs to be done, as all the operating budgets are due on the twelfth. Nancy's been a great resource already, helping in that and working through it the first time. Lots more capital projects this year requested, so that we added to the already five-year rolling that we have, so it was quite a bit of work there. And the only other thing that I want to share with the board is that I have appointed a new Council on Aging Director. Her name is Linda Presuti Hayes. She is the current Assistant Director of the Council on Aging in the Town of Duxbury, and she will begin work December thirtieth, and she will come to meet you at your December seventeenth meet, meeting at the beginning, so she can introduce you. Florence's last day is December twentieth, she will be available to orient Linda to their duties. Linda was the unanimous recommendation and choice of the Chair and Vice Chair of the Council on Aging, of which Florence also interviewed, and the staff. So, everybody's on the same page, and we really look forward to her starting, and-
Hey, it's good news, it's great.
The manager of social services started yesterday, so lots of good changes at the Council on Aging.
Excellent, thank you. Is that it?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item number eleven is other business correspondence and minutes, I'll stop with the minutes if someone wants to go with that first.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to accept the regular session minutes of November twenty-six, 2013.
Second. I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
With the Board of Selectmen vote to accept the executive session minutes of November twelfth and November twenty-sixth.
Second. I have a motion and a second, all those-
Do I say no release? No release.
Okay. I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and opposed? All right, and none? Correspondence, let's see.
There's none?
There's got to be something. You can't let Marty off without anything.
Sure you can.
Marty, read all those licenses again.
All right, while he's looking for something, I'll jump over to Rick.
Where's Harvey Day when you need him?
Other business. Any other business, Rick?
No.
John, oh.
Just to let you know, obviously, this Friday is first Friday for the merchants on Front Street downtown. If you haven't already, start your holiday shopping, by all means, please start local, shopping local. It's, it's obviously in the evening, and they do a really nice job, the merchants. Second, for those who are interested, the, you know, Santa will be coming in this Saturday, I think Tony will probably elaborate a little bit more. This is when Santa comes in off the, off the boat, and is greeted by all the kids. I believe it starts at ten, and then from there, there'll be a procession down to the Situate Harbor Community Center, sorry, I'm going to say Pier Forty-four for those people who don't know what it is, and where Santa will be able to meet and greet all the kids.
John, how long does Santa stay for?
An hour and a half.
Usually until all the kids have, have gone through the line, it could be two to three hours.
Two to three hours. And also, just note, there's, there's a lot of crafts, it's all free, there's food and drink and crafts for all the kids to do, so.
And food.
And you make cookies and-
And food. The merchants are also looking forward to the stroll, so if kids go in one direction, you know, the parents can go in the other and do some shopping. The third thing that's, that's going on is Christmas wreaths, the merchants, various ones who are participating have it, and I think you vote on it, and so it's a great weekend for shopping. Obviously, the holidays are coming quickly upon us. The other thing is, there are various fairs and, like, bazaars that the various churches are putting on. Frequent them, try it, see what it, see what it's like, and that's it for me.